Good morning. I would like to remind everyone to please make sure that all cell phones are turned to the off or vibrate position. Also, please be advised, our city council meetings are broadcast on Comcast Channel 99, AT&amp;T U-verse, and the City of Gadsden YouTube channel. This meeting of the Gadsden City Council will now come to order. The Chair calls on City Clerk Iva Nelson for the roll call.
Councilwoman Latham?
Present.
Councilwoman Smith?
Here.
Councilwoman Avery?
Here.
Councilman Back?
Here.
Councilwoman Wilson?
Here.
Councilwoman Minatra?
Here.
And Councilwoman Robinson?
Here.
We have a quorum present, and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Brian Harbison to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Will you pray with me? Almighty God, we're so thankful for life, for the opportunity to be here, for the freedom together. We thank you for these individuals who are representing their communities. Thank you for their sacrifice. We pray your blessings on our mayor and his staff, his office. God, we're excited about the things to come. We thank you for blessing Gadsden with the leadership that stands before you now. And I just pray as we move forward that we'll stand together, and we'll move together, and we'll move all of our communities forward. And we promise to give you the praise. Bless this meeting today and our efforts in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session and city council meeting held on December 6.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
The Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payment of accounts for the week of December 2nd through December 8th.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Item number seven on our agenda is proclamations and commendations. Mayor, you have one, I believe.
Thank you, Mr. President of the council. Before I get started, we have an intern here today. I'd like to recognize, y'all may recognize, you stand up and state your name.
My name's Mitton Reschmar. I'm at Junior at Gadsden City High School.
And Mitton and I work at an absolute gym together, so he's a lot younger and healthier than I am. But Mitton, thank you for joining us today.
Yes.
I want to say we have a mayor's commendation, and then we also have a proclamation.
Okay.
I'll read this. On October 19th, 2022, the Glencoe Fire Department was dispatched to an accident involving a vehicle that exited the roadway near the Gadsden city limits on US Highway 278 East. The Gadsden Fire Department was called for assistance. The wrecked vehicle was approximately 40 yards off the roadway in a wooded area, and the occupant was trapped in a burning vehicle. Three Gadsden firemen, without the protection of a hose line or breathing apparatus, selflessly put their lives at risk to pull the individual from a burning vehicle. For these actions, City of Gadsden Fireman Drew Langley, Noah Johnson, and Logan Sexton were nominated by Glencoe Fire Chief Richard Johnson for firefighter of the year award. These combined efforts of Glencoe Fire Department and crews from Gadsden's Engine Number Nine and Truck 20 were able to extinguish the fire and care for the individual who make a full recovery. I'm grateful for our firefighters. Thank you for the uncommon courage when everything else is on the line, and congratulations on your nomination, and I would like to applaud you. Thank you. And if you three would come forward, and as you can see, we're busy in Gadsden with our first responders. And we have a lot of great first responders, and sometimes unfortunately, a lot of activity. But fortunately, we have the best first responders that take these accidents and make them turn into something positive.
Count three.
Mr. President, if you don't mind, Ms. Iva, would you step down here, please? So Ms. Martha Elrod was a friend of all of ours, but I would say, Kent, she was a friend of yours and mine, and probably everybody on this council. She passed away, but she's probably more of a friend to anyone on here than Ms. Nelson, our city clerk. And I've heard her talk about how she taught her a lot of information about the clerk's office, but also a lot about life. I personally could not have asked for a better person to be around. Her and Ms. Claudia German were always at our political events, were positive. They were at Ms. Councilman Minatra's events, and they were just excited to be a Gadsdenite. And if you did not know these people, you missed a treat, but she was very involved in the Women's Club, very instrumental with my wife. She was friends with my wife. But I loved Ms. Martha Elrod, and unfortunately, she passed away. But I'm going to ask Ms. Iva, who was a close friend of hers, to read this resolution, and her son's going to accept on her behalf.
Would you like to come on up?
This is Steve Elrod, Martha's son. Whereas Martha Abney Elrod began her career with the City of Gadsden in 1956, working for a short time before the birth of her son, Steve. Martha returned to work for the city in 1963 in the city clerk's office and continued until her retirement in April of 2002. During her tenure, she served in the mayoral administrations of Hugh S. Patterson Jr., L.L. Les Gililand, C.B. Collier, who served as an interim mayor, Steve Means, and David Nolan. And whereas, in her early years of employment, the city clerk's office performed many functions such as employee insurance benefits, records of city equipment, purchase orders, and payroll that are now accomplished through separate departments. Martha was a dedicated worker under the supervision of city clerks P.M. McCall and Catherine Owen. And whereas, in 1976, Martha was appointed city clerk and also served as temporary comptroller for the city during two times of transition in the Finance Department. Martha was clerk during the city's change of government in 1986, from mayor commission to mayor council form of government, and treasurer duties were added to the position in 1987. And whereas Martha was instrumental in establishing a clerks association to ensure educational and networking opportunities for clerks across the state, she was selected clerk of the year in 1983 and went on to serve as president of the Alabama Association of Municipal Clerks and Administrators in 1985. She achieved the designation of certified municipal clerk through the International Association of Municipal Clerks. Martha was dedicated to her profession and served as a knowledgeable and inspirational mentor to her fellow clerks and her assistant, Iva Nelson. Martha retired in April 2002 and continued to serve the city in election years, overseeing the absentee ballot tabulation process. And whereas Martha was very active in the community, volunteering for countless hours with United Way, Altrusa Club, The Chamber, especially the Riverfest events, and the Women's Club, she served as president and worked on the Civic Directory, the 9/11 memorial observances, and the Holiday Tour of Homes. Martha ceased her work in her earthly home and went to be in her heavenly home on November 29th, 2022. Now therefore, I, Craig Ford, Mayor of the Gadsden, Alabama, do hereby join with the Gadsden City Council in proclaiming December 13th, 2022, as Martha Abney Elrod Day in the City of Gadsden, honoring her love and dedication to our city and commending her many contributions to our community and its citizens. And we have the signature of Craig Ford, Mayor, Kent Back, Council President, and then my signature as well. So I'd like to present this to...
I'll say just a few things real quick. I'm glad Ms. Iva read this, because I'd have never got through it. For those that knew my mother, it's no surprise that she died getting ready to go somewhere. And she died getting ready to come back to Gadsden. She'd moved to Huntsville, but not really. She had literally one foot in Gadsden all the time, and she told me about three weeks ago that she'd put 10,000 miles on her car in three months, and I'll bet you nearly every bit of it was put coming here. So I'll say this, she was dedicated to her work, and I thought about this driving down, this is totally impromptu, but I thought about this driving down, what did my mother leave in me that could relate back to working here? And I'll give you two things that kind of... Number one, her work ethic was serious. I mean, she believed in what she did, and she enjoyed what she did, and she wanted it done right. Okay, I spent 30 years in the Navy Reserve as an officer, and I've spent 40, I got my 45-year service pin at NASA yesterday. She taught me to do the hard part first. That was the way it was with her. She would kind of look at a job, and she'd say, okay, I got these things to do, and maybe I've got somebody to help, whatever. But whatever the hard part was, she would sort that out and attack it first while you still had enough gas in the tank to maybe take on the rest. That was one thing, and I carried that with me. The other thing was, and she told me this over and over, she handled money all the time, right? She book-keeped here, and there's one thing that wasn't mentioned here, she used to book-keep, I think, at Sears Roebuck, when it was down here, close to the county jail. Can't give God more than God can give you. And she instilled that in me when I was a little kid, you know, and she was serious about tithe, and man, she'd figure out, you know, what she had coming in, and she would make sure she gave. And that caused some arguments around my house when I was a little kid. I remember that, because somebody else didn't have that attitude so much. But she did. And that's something I've carried with me, and I'd say those two things are probably as big as anything else amongst all the other stuff, but those two kind of anchored me down. So God bless y'all. I appreciate this very much, and she's in Gadsden. You know what I'm saying?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you to our first responders, our firemen, for their bravery. And also, Steve, thank you for being here today. And personal note, my family has lived across the street from Martha for 42 years, so I met Martha when I was in my early twenties, I guess, and she remained a good friend all of those years, and I miss her. I miss her. Thank you.
All right, number eight on the agenda is unfinished business. 8A is an ordinance rezoning property located at 1120 and 1130 Goodyear Avenue from R2, Multiple Family Residence District to O1 Office District. This ordinance was tabled seven days on December 6. The owners have been approached by a potential buyer who wants to construct a medical office at this location. The planning commission unanimously recommended approval. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this ordinance. Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
8B is a ordinance amending fiscal year 2023 budget by transferring $407,753 from the general fund unassigned fund balance into the capital system software account. This is to pay for software to be purchased from Tyler Technologies authorized by Resolution Number R-342-22. This ordinance was presented last week for first reading. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this ordinance.
So moved. Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
8C is a ordinance amending city code sections 82-1 and 82-3 regarding municipal court. This ordinance was presented last week for first reading. It provides for court sessions to be held on Tuesday and Thursday, or at other times the council may determine. It also fixes compensation of municipal court judges at $1,000 per week, with total compensation for all judges no more than $52,000 in a fiscal year. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yes.
Yes.
Just wanted to say, for those viewers at home, those viewers present, that we, as a legislative body, exercised whatever voice, whatever authority we had in our voting. We did request to be polled, that was done. We did request to have a meet and greet with the candidates, and that was also done. And I know I personally wanted to make sure we stay consistent with what the previous administration was doing as related to the judges. So I just want to say that we, as a council, have done our part, and now it's no longer with the council, it's on the mayor. And so that's why the mayor have to make those tough decisions. So thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, council. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be known by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
8D is a resolution amending employee handbooks for fire, police, public works, administrative and clerical, and management employees. This resolution was tabled for 30 days on November 7. What is the pleasure of the council?
Mayor, President back, I just had a point of reference. We have assembled a group of people that will be looking into the revisions for the employee handbooks that we have, currently five, that have not been revised since '07. We have our very first meeting on Thursday morning, and we anticipate that we will be able to have a finished product by March 1st. This information will be included in that particular revision proposal. So I just wanted everyone on the council to know that this group of a large, I would say, variety of people that are going to make a contribution to the revisions for the handbook will be able to meet and discuss many facets of that handbook over the next several months. So I just provide that information prior to vote.
Well, then, do we need to table this until that group has completed their work? Is that what you...
I would think so. I mean, this is part of that larger discussion and was the reason why we probably tabled it two other times previously. So to give the group a chance to do their due diligence, I believe I've heard they're going to meet with Auburn University, what's it called, the Department of Political Science or Science and Government or something like that. So in addition to the folks that we have assembled, so I think this would be premature to probably vote.
Government and Economic Development, yeah. The GEDI.
Yeah. So they're going to weigh in on it as well. So I think it would probably be prudent to push this off either to March 1st, or maybe just say indefinitely until you come back with your recommendations.
I'd make a motion that we table this indefinitely until the working group comes back with their recommendations to the body.
Second.
Right. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to table the resolution for an indefinite period, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to table indefinitely.
Item 8E is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property at 408 Avalon Lane in District 2. This resolution was tabled for seven days on December 6. There is a recommendation from the building official to adopt the resolution. What is the pleasure of the council?
Make a motion to adopt.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item 8F is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance of trash and debris on property at 1138 Goodyear Avenue in District 2. This resolution was tabled for seven days on December 6. There is a recommendation from the building official to adopt the resolution. What is the pleasure of the council?
Make a motion to adopt.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item nine is, this is the time and place as advertised to conduct a public hearing allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property located at 502 Henry Street in District 3, Odell Smoot being the last known owner. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, I'm Brian Harbison with the Builder Department. We filed this case in February of this year. There was a building permit taken out in August. There have been no improvements, no work done on that permit. We're asking today for a resolution to abate the nuisance.
What is the pleasure of the council?
So, Mr. President, I've already spoken with Mr. Brian on this to, for this recommendation that I'm going to ask, I'm going to ask for a table of 30 days. I've also spoken with the owners of this home, and so we're going to try to make some things happen. So table for 30 days.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to table the resolution for 30 days, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to table for 30 days.
Item 10 is, our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property located at 3320 Madison Avenue in District 6, Medill Properties LLC being the last known owner. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, we filed this case in January of this year. There have been no improvements, there are no permits to improve, and we're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
What is the pleasure of the council?
I make a motion to adopt.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Number 11 is a public hearing on a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property located at 2810 Railroad Avenue in District 6, Nicole Jackson Clark, Robert Gene Ransall Sr., Robert Gene Ransall Jr., Elister Ransall, and Nicole Jackson Clark listed as the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, this involves a burned structure, 2810 Railroad. We filed it in April. There have been no improvements, no permits to improve, and we're asking for a resolution to abate this nuisance. Thank you.
What is the pleasure of the council?
I make a motion to adopt.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our final public hearing is an ordinance amending the zoning ordinance to permit medical cannabis. Ordinance O-37-22 adopted October 11th, 2022 authorized the operation of medical cannabis cultivators, processors, secure transporters, dispensaries, and integrated facilities within the corporate city limits of Gadsden. This amendment establishes the five components and their definitions in the zoning ordinance and the zoning districts in which they may operate. The planning commission unanimously recommended approval. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this ordinance? Does anyone wish to speak in favor? This ordinance was presented today for first reading.
Mr. President, I'm sorry to interrupt, but if possible, I'd like for us to, with consent, a unanimous consent of the council to suspend the rules and consider this today.
Second.
Is a second? All right. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the ordinance today at its first reading, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, we have a unanimous vote for consideration.
Move to adopt.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
And just, I apologize, I should have done this during the comments section, but I just want to clarify again for the record that this medical cannabis ordinance is a statewide ordinance that was passed by the Alabama Legislature. The City of Gadsden is following those same guidelines in addition to some additional, or in addition to those state guidelines, we will be adding some additional restrictions to these operations in the City of Gadsden. And this ordinance defines specifically what areas of the community and what zones where these dispensaries will be allowed. And to clarify that in order to receive or participate in this medical cannabis program, which is only pill form, there's no other form of marijuana, you won't see it being smoked or any other form other than medicinal pill, you will be required to receive a prescription from a licensed doctor who has gone through additional training in medical cannabis before you could actually visit one of these facilities. And again, we've limited these facilities to be able to locate in very specific parts of the community. So not only is it being regulated heavily by the state, but also here locally by the City of Gadsden as well. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Councilman Wilson, and thank you for your work in that regard on helping to get all this settled for our city to move forward in that. All right, number 13 on the item is new business. Seeing none, I believe this is 14, is department reports.
Committees or boards? You got another?
Oh, was that one? Yeah, that's right. Yeah, bring it, I'm sorry. Mr. President, that's okay. This was something that we took a vote on during pre-council, but I would like to go ahead, if there's no objection from the council, and suspend the rules and consider this resolution appointing the municipal judges that we just voted on.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today as an item of new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, we have unanimous consent.
I'd like to move to adopt, and just for the record, this resolution names Jonathan Welch and Nikki Tinker as the new municipal judges for the City of Gadsden.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Thank you, Councilman Wilson. All right, now onto 14, department reports, committees, boards. Josh, do you have anything to offer with inclement weather?
Exactly what was on my mind.
So Director Gaither was prevented from being here today, so she asked that I come and attend. The grounds in our area are already very saturated. We sat in on a webinar this morning where the potential exists for two to three inches of rain over the next probably 24 to 72 hours. Our traditional spots that flood, every time it rains, they're going to flood, but we may see an increase in that flooding. We've already gathered up a trailer with some empty sandbags. We would just have to get them field to get out to the citizens if they need to block the water from entering their home. The National Weather Service also indicated that they will probably be issuing a flash flood watch at some point in the next 24 hours or so. So how I would suggest handling this situation is use common sense, that the same thing that you would do for any other severe weather event, do it for this one. The National Weather Service uses the term turnaround, don't drown. You don't want to be that person that they put the, you know, put the warning on the item about, you know, that you shouldn't hold the coffee because the coffee's hot. If they tell you to turn around, you need to turn around and go the other way. They don't do case studies on folks that do things right. So just monitor the weather situation. We're going to be monitoring it, and we'll be providing updates. If you're not signed up for Alert Edwah, you can sign up for that from our webpage, which is G E C E M A dot com. Any questions? webpage, which is G E C E M A dot com. Any questions?
All right. Thank you so much.
Yes, sir.
Any other department heads or committee reports? If not, we'll move to item fifteen, which is citizen request to speak. First on the list is John Crane. He's the Humane Society interim, interim director, and he wants to introduce himself to the new administration. I've said your name, but if you'll please introduce yourself.
John Crane, here for three reasons. Number one was to say hello to some old friends, to assure everybody that Santa Claus is alive and well. And to introduce myself as the interim director. I've been there almost two months now, and I'll just say that we are making progress. I informed Chief Jaggers this morning and my staff that we are going back to open intake with animal control for the City of Gadsden and for the City of Etowah. I've had Ms. Gaither come out, and she worked with us to do some evacuation plans, make notations for improvement, and she's coming back out to do some training with my staff. But, other than that, like I said, I just came to say hello, let you know what I look like, so when I walk up to you, you won't be scared, and go from there.
Well, thank you so much. And for full disclosure, John Crane, of course, is a retired police chief of the City of Gadsden, and he's very familiar with Humane Society and the ordinances surrounding animal control. So, we're grateful that you've stepped into the role that you're in. Thank you, because you didn't have to do that. You, you did it because you care. You care about our city, and you care about animals. So, thank you for, thank you for volunteering.
Let me make one offer that's completely off topic, has nothing to do with the Humane Society, and people have read this before. But if there's somebody in your district that has a child too sick to see Santa, there's folks here who know how to get in touch with me. Santa, this, Santa makes house calls. Let me know, and I will go to them. No child should have to do without Santa. Just let me know.
Amen. Thank you.
Mr. President, can I ask, can I say something?
Yes, Mayor.
So, Mr. Crane, I want to tell you, thank you. We did an animal task force, and he's been working with Ms. Gina Hollingsworth and Animal Task Force, and we're close to coming to some resolutions. And I know we're having some conversations, but thank you for at least talking and trying to work with us on all that. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Thanks. Next is Molly Lemay, city support of the annual Girlfriend Gala fundraiser.
Good morning.
Good morning, Molly.
I have these as well for y'all. There's not enough for everybody, but you can share and read. My name is Molly Lemay. I am the Student Success Director at United Way of Etowah County, and every year we hold our annual fundraiser Girlfriend Gala, which goes to support a hundred percent of my programs. And so, Girlfriend Gala this year is March sixteenth, twenty-twenty-three at the venue. And a lot of the programs that we get to, get to do because of Girlfriend Gala are the Dolly Parton Imagination Library, which is one free book a month delivered to a child's address until they turn five. And right now we have approximately seventeen thousand five hundred books had been delivered up until last week, and we are seeking about another two thousand before the end of the, before the end of the month. And so, that's our biggest, our biggest program. We also get to do things like Kinder Camp, a Read to Succeed reading initiative that I'm, that I've got going on right now at Adams Elementary. So, I'm just here to hopefully seek some city support for this year's fundraiser. So, thank you. Any questions or anything?
Just thank you for what your organization does and has done for a number of years in our community. It's one of those unsung heroes. I think everybody always hear, always hear of Girlfriend Gala and know a little bit about it, but it's nice to know exactly what your group does, and, and you're, you're helping those that, that are less fortunate that need the help. So, we're very appreciative of your efforts.
Well, thank you. Yes, it's very not, it's not the easiest work sometimes, but it's very rewarding for those that we get to help. I think this year, I've been with United Way since April, and I think I've touched over about five thousand students as a whole from kindergarten up to twelfth grade. So, it's busy work, and it's a lot of work, but it's very rewarding. So, thank you.
Could you just give us, elaborate a little bit more on the Girlfriend Gala and how we could support that? Can, can folks in the community buy tables to the event?
Yes, absolutely. So, Girlfriend Gala is a girls' night out for children's literacy. So, I apologize, men, you were not invited, unless you would like to volunteer and help the event kind of kick off and serve drinks and food and things like that.
Don't be a server, guys. Just trust me on that.
I myself have never actually experienced Girlfriend Gala. I've only been in Alabama for about a year and a half, and so this will be completely new for me. But the sponsorships that are available, you can purchase a table. So, say the City of Gadsden wanted to purchase a table and send eight of their employees or nine of their employees, they will get tickets, door price tickets, all that good stuff. And then if individuals wanted to buy tickets, say Dixie, you wanted to get eight of your friends together from the women's club, you could all purchase a table together and buy your tickets, and you'd be sat together at that one table. So, there's different ways, there's different levels of sponsorship and different levels of giving. And it also comes with table decorating. So, the big thing of Girlfriend Gala is the tablescapes. And so, years past, the table decorations used to be auctioned off, and that was part of our fundraiser, but then things got crazy. People were bringing live animals and all this kind of stuff. So, it just got a little out of hand. So, we no longer auction off the table decorations, but it's still the big main event of Girlfriend Gala. So, if you sponsored a table, maybe the eight women that wanted to go to the event, they could get together and come up with a plan to decorate this big elaborate table for show, and they'd get to sit at that table. And we do a preview day that morning, so everybody can see everybody's work and everything like that. So.
Is there a website or, or a contact number that we can?
Yes. So, my card is attached to all those paperclips, but there's also a website. It's just girlfriendgala@etowah.com, and it has all the information as well. I also share it to our Success by Six Facebook page, usually once or twice a week. So.
Great. Thank you very much.
Yeah, of course. Thank you.
Thank you, Molly.
Thank you.
Well, we saved the best for the last, and they are not on the agenda, but they've come from Mobile and Montgomery. In order to adhere to Robert's Rules of Order, we'll need to have a, a motion that they can speak and have to be a unanimous consent. So.
Well, I'll make a motion they can speak.
All right. Second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to allow Design Alabama to make their presentation, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, we have unanimous consent.
Thank you. Y'all, this morning at the pre-council meeting, we had a pretty, about a fifteen-minute videotype presentation, and these folks worked with our city leaders and city and citizens volunteers about, what, twenty nineteen or twenty, started twenty-eighteen, twenty nineteen. They've come back today, and it is a really exciting proposal. And so, we're going to ask them to, we've asked to give a, just an overview, and, and this is, it's really, I've been thinking about it since I saw it, and I'm, I'm very excited about the Nakalula Falls corridor.
Well, Council President, thank you for having us back up for a few more minutes. Again, we want to thank you all for the opportunity to come back and talk about the work that we did with the city back in, in twenty nineteen, twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, twenty-twenty in devour, in developing the Reimagine Gadsden Plan. We came and worked with the community looking at the Nakalula Falls corridor, coming up from Gateway Plaza, over the mountain and back up toward Highway fifty-nine, looking at ways to revitalize and reinvigorate that community along that corridor. A, a lot of it was focused around the area at the entrance of Nakalula Falls Park and how to create a sort of neighborhood village, a, a destination that supported the residents in that area as well as could enhance some of the tourism aspects around the park. You know, we heard this morning during the work session about, and we learned at the time as well what a tremendous asset the park was for the community and for the region, as well as North Alabama and the whole state. And kind of, we think we developed a plan in conjunction with working with the community that supports those efforts and really enhances that part of the community. We were thrilled to get the chance to come back and, and kind of present that to y'all as, as part of our wrap-up and hopefully consider an endorsement from y'all, kind of recognizing the plan and making it part of your community's long-range planning efforts into the future.
Well, thank you so much. That's, we were excited to see and hear. We were excited also to hear the mayor's comments. Mayor, if you would care to chime in, please do.
So, we are, we want to appreciate what you're doing, and we're working, we're developing a master plan also at the time that this will coordinate with. And I think the person we're trying to enter into an agreement with also works with your firm, Goodwin Mills and Kaywood. So, this is something that we talked about, where the falls generate some a million dollars a year for the Christmas lights, and we're talking about doing this all at once, possibly where it doesn't take money out of the general fund or from any particular council person's district. So, we can, instead of doing one project at a time, we can hit it all at one time and possibly put ten million, fifteen million pro, money into the project and totally renovate the falls and the campground. So, thank you.
That's very exciting. I'm sure there'll be a, a proposal coming very soon from this council, from this body in, in that direction. Want to also recognize Eric Wright. Eric, always good to have you back at City Hall, and thank you for your work in leading that, I think, back in, in those days. And, and also say hello to Shane Ellison, who's now at the county as the Chief Administrative Officer. Shane was involved in that, representing the mayor's office back in those days. So, we're, we're very excited to have you guys here today, and thank you for the work and for the vision of reimagining Gadsden. This is one really big step for our city to take, and we're, we're excited.
Thank you all.
Thank you. All right. Well, we will, we will go into the Council remarks, but before we do that, I would like to take a personal pleasure and just recognize and say hello to Greg Cochran in the back of the room. Greg is the Executive Director of the Alabama League of Municipalities. Greg, I hope, put you on the spot, but welcome, and you are welcome at, at City Hall. And if you'd like to, if you could have come to the podium over here, I'd love for you to say, say hello. We were all with Greg in Kansas City at the National League of Cities Conference a few weeks ago, and got to spend some quality time with Greg and his staff. For those that don't know, the Alabama League of Municipalities are vitally important to every city in the, in the state of Alabama. So, it's an honor to have you with us this morning.
Mr. President, thank you so much for recognizing me, and thank you for giving me an opportunity to say Merry Christmas, and I hope you have a wonderful new year. I'm excited for the City of Gadsden with this leadership and the things that you have before you. It's a great opportunity for this community to grow and prosper, and the leadership's in the right place, and I know you'll do a great job. And anything we can do at the league to help you in that endeavor, we want to be there for you.
Well, thank you so much. And I'll, I'll let you know, we had breakfast with Greg in Kansas City, and I said, Greg, we have five new council members. We have a new mayor with a new staff, and would you come, bring your staff to Gadsden and do a city government one-on-one? Greg didn't hesitate. He said, we'd be glad to come to Gadsden. So, I think we're looking at the week of January twelfth.
Yes, sir. That's correct.
And so, that is very nice of you and your staff to come and to spend about four or five hours with us in, as elected officials and as government officials to, just to do a one-on-one city government to make sure that we all know what we're doing and we're headed in the right direction. And that'll be very, I look very forward to that.
We, we look forward to it as well. It speaks volumes to the commitment of this body to be its best self, that you want to learn everything that you can of opportunities and the best training. So, thank you for letting us be a partner in that. And again, we look forward to working with you and this body going into twenty-twenty-three.
Well, thank you so much. Thanks for being here.
Yes, sir. Thank you for the recognition.
Nice surprise. Thank you. Yes, sir. All right. Well, now we'll be in the remarks of the mayor and council. And since we are at Nakalula Falls, I think I'm, I'm going to recognize Councilman Robinson. That's right in his front yard, I believe.
I get to talk about this?
Sure.
I'm just appreciate Design Alabama for coming in and presenting this to us, and thank the mayor's office for sitting down with me and Eric and Brett. Appreciate that, and listening to us and talk about this. I think this is a, a great thing for the City of Gadsden. It's going to be a great thing for Nakalula Falls. Look forward to the future up there. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Monatra.
I too am excited about Design Alabama, because I wa, I watched that Alabama City logo pop up on the bottom of that screen. So, there's a future there.
All right. Thank you. Councilman Wilson.
I, I don't have much to say other than the, just to drive home the point. Number one, congratulations to our two municipal judges. For those of you guys who have been following that process over the last few weeks, it's not always pretty, but the democratic process works. It, you know, the old saying, you don't really, nobody really wants to see how the sausage is made. Well, maybe we got to show people how the sausage is made a little more than we wanted to on that one, but I'm, I'm happy with the outcome, and I hope everybody else is too. The, the Nakalula Falls corridor, I just want to commend our mayor on this, because it takes so much from an administration to coordinate all of these individuals and all of these programs, and all of these resources that are available to communities like us, be it from addressing the animal control issues that we have in this community to looking at broad, long-term visions for our different parts of this municipality and all the different neighborhoods that we have. It takes so much coordination and help from organizations all over the state to be able to pull this off. And thank you to the mayor's office and his administration for embracing projects like this and to figuring out and being committed to figuring out how all these things work together to make Gadsden a better place overall. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor, for all y'all's efforts. That's all I have.
Councilman Avery.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll try to make this short, but I've got a few things I want to talk about. First, thank you to the Police Department for their shot with a cop event. As a president of, about to be former president of organization, we understand how many families are in need and that are going through in this season. And so, for the Police Department, also Fire Department, for their charitable event, and all of the others that have not come to my desk or haven't come by me, as we collaborate and work, as we have worked with in the past with Taurus for Tots, and hope that we can see them back in action here soon. Want to also, he's left, give continuous condolences and prayer for the Arrod family. She was close to my family through, due to the previous person deceased before, Council Worthy, and that was Mr. Avery, Robert Avery. And, and as she met me at inauguration, and she said, as your uncle, give them hell. And so, therefore, she, she was very close to our family, and, and so we, we definitely would miss her as well. When it comes to abatement concerning District Three, I'm trying to be very strategic with working with families and our community and making sure that we don't continue to tear down homes with the possibility of revitalizing them. We are in desperate need of affordable housing in our district. We are in desperate need of, of a new construction in our community. We are in desperate need of, based on just the history of how those homes was occupied. Okay? And so, with the legacy of hard-working grandparents and mothers and aunts and uncles, and then we have someone that don't want to deal with the property and so on and so on, and so the next thing is to tear it down. Well, let's look for a new owner. Let's look for a possible investor or something. And so, we're working on that, and I'm, I'm grateful for Brian, Mr. Harbison, sorry for being patient with me as we try to make this vision work for District Three. Another thing that I have concerning the citizens, probably mostly non-citizens of District Three, we're not a trash can. Where the old Emmett BBQ is, it's not a trash can. I mean, there's a trash can dumpster not too far from there. Tuscaloosa Avenue is not a trash can. North Gadsden is not a trash can. Okay? So, if you have some paper in your car that need to go into a trash can, put it in a doggone trash can. Okay? We're too busy trying to keep our community clean. Our community deserves the same respect as any other district in the City of Gadsden. And even if you live in another district, don't dirty up that freaking district. Okay? We are one city with seven districts, but our community, District Three, is definitely not a trash can. So, we're going to be working diligently, as I did and took pictures of the speeder that's speeding up and down Tenth Street and Eighth Street and all the other streets, and make sure that we got the police on its behind. We have children and seniors and veterans in our community. When you're waking, being woken up at five-thirty and six o'clock in the morning from somebody who just want a joyride up and down the streets like an idiot, okay, enough is enough. Okay? Enough is enough. And so, we're, we're arising and awakening some people in the community that's going to help combat the issues that our Police Department and our Fire Department and our Building Department don't have to do the work all by themselves. This is our community. Okay? And we, we, before we start calling City Hall, we're going to call each other, and we're going to make sure that our neighbors know, and we're going to work together to figure out these issues first. All right? Gadsden State Jazz Band had a concert, I think maybe yesterday, and celebrating their first black director. And so, a great event. I heard I was unfortunately under the weather, I couldn't attend. And so, we are praising his efforts and vision for that jazz band, which I heard did a wonderful job. Summing up here, Carver Community Revitalization Committee had its eleventh Christmas parade. I see Pastor Dudley, so I want to thank you in person, since I didn't give you a call, was able, unable to give you a call. Also, also, there was another person, Pastor Treadwell. Also, also, there was another person, Pastor Treadwell, for commentating that event. Had a well-attended event, even though it rained, we still had people that stayed and weathered the storm. We had only people that had to leave out of the parade, we had probably about sixty to seventy, if not more motorcycles. The EZ Riders had to leave because they was getting soaked. And so we thank everyone that weathered that storm and stayed out there for that parade. The bitter part of the sweep is is that for the, since two thousand and eleven, that organization has been in that community. I'm going to read something real briefly here concerning that community so that we would know. Before I became councilperson, I did the same thing to the previous council. It was appreciative that people knew about the organization. Carver Community Revitalization Committee serves family by responding to a community aspirations with an expanded array of products, services, partnerships, with the mission of empowering residents to revive their community, their neighborhood, and enhance the quality of life. CCRC also hosts Carver District Favorite Annual Events, First Saturday and Carver Community Christmas Parade. The first Saturday of each month, Carver Square comes alive with On the Square Event, late-night shopping, dining, and something for everyone to enjoy. Carver Community Christmas Parade brings our community together, our community together. They require almost a year of planning and countless hours of preparation by volunteers, those who build floats and those who organize organize participants. Also critical is the cooperation among community officials, safety forces, who efforts ensure all goes well with the day of the event. Carver Community Revitalization Committee also helped to stabilize, preserve, and revitalize the Carver District area. This include, but not limited to, painting of homes, building of wheelchair ramps and walking, walking challenge ramps, small detail landscape, landscape, community outreach, volunteering, job resources, financial education, homeownership workshops, and the list goes on and on. There was an unfortunate that we were unable to receive the facilities or obtain the facilities to feed our community, which we do every year, and we had to stand out in the rain while babies held in the mother's arms and children was out in the rain and the cool. I won't say cold because it wasn't too cold, and to receive food, which could have been their either their only meal for the day or their last meal for the day. So we want to make sure that even the small things that our organizations do in our community are recognized and appreciated, and anything that can be done to help these organizations survive and provide for the people that are in need, they need to be helped and taken care of and recognized. This work is not easy. This work is not to be taken lightly, and this work, this community is for the undeserved and for the poorest community in this in this city. And so therefore, for an organization that does the work that they do, I think the community organization for all their hard work and all those that play a part, again Pastor Dudley and all of those others that have worked tirelessly, I see also Brandon Hall, who is on that board as well, who works tirelessly, non-paid, to make sure that these efforts goes on in this community. I'll yield the rest of my time and won't say the rest of those comments. Thank you.
Councilman Smith.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just want to send out continued condolences to the Elrod's family and also to the family of Mr. Chamberlain Parker, who's here taking pictures today, and thank all of you for the love and support in the passing of our father. We also had two community meetings in District Two, one in East Gaston, one in North Gaston. We'll be putting together a survey, feedback, action-type of plan to give feedback, and thanks for all the citizens that came out. And I want to say to the mayor, Mayor Ford, thank you for coming out to my dad's home, going, Councilwoman Latham, Councilman Avery, and Councilman Beck. We appreciate it. From the clerk's office, Ms. Hywood, thank you all so very much for just outpouring a love that helped all of us during a very difficult time. The last thing I want to say is Chief Crane, good to see you. We held a roundtable at our church years ago. I apologize if I didn't recognize you, you look a little different than the picture we took years ago. But you'd probably say I look different too, because I'm bald-headed on here, and so you got a little extra hair. But anyway, good to see you, and I know Chief Jaggers is not going to be outdone, so we'll be putting one together soon. Thank you, good to see you.
Councilwoman Latham.
Good afternoon to everyone. I just want to say that I was afforded the opportunity to witness the Gaston City High School Titan Theater on Saturday night, I think it was. And I just want to give a shout out to them, the awesome talent that those young people presented, and along with their teacher and his wife, Mr. Wooten, I think that is. It was an awesome event. It was awesome. And so just want to give a shout out to them on just the awesome talent that they presented on Friday night. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Ford?
Yes, we also had representation at that theater, and it was wonderful. We went to the mayor's Christmas party and with Councilman Latham and Council, Councilwoman Monatra and Councilwoman Latham, sorry, and had a good time, and Greg Cochran had a good conversation and talked to us. It was fabulous. We had a meeting with our faith-based leaders last week addressing homelessness at the venue. Orchestra Partners is someone that we continue to meet with, looking at a development plan for the riverfront on downtown. Also had the honor of being able to participate in the Carver Christmas Parade due to Councilman Avery. Also, we appointed a committee to study personnel handbooks and pay scale to revamp before we build next budget, along with Councilman Monatra. Congratulations to our student for her mentorship. Thank you for coming today. See you at the gym this afternoon. We don't do not please forget, Christmas parade Thursday, even though we have bad weather tomorrow, it's supposed to clear up by one AM Thursday morning. So we have the true snow being blown, and we have the real Santa that's come from the North Pole, and he brought his Clydesdales, and we got the whole nine yards. So don't miss it, because we got a one-shot deal to make this work, so. And we want to thank the Kiwanis Club for also helping us make a transition to this. The trolley fairs, we had the meeting yesterday. It went fabulous. We lowered the fares to fifty cents and twenty-five cents, and I think you already know the reason why. Dart was fifty, seniors and Medicaid on the trolley was twenty-five cents. We're going to a twenty-six-week pay period, January first, twenty twenty-four, January first, twenty twenty-four. We are continuing to open up the RFQs for the master plan. We will take the study that was presented to us today and also the study that's presented to us by Orchestra Partners and integrate those into a master plan and present it to the council for consideration. Great news, something we couldn't talk about last week. We've been working on this since we were sworn in. We finally closed on Goodyear. So Goodyear closed, we reissued the press release today, and just to let you know, it's a hundred and fifty-six acres. It's two million nine hundred and fifty-two thousand square feet. It has thirty dock doors, and we also have rail and trail, rail and trailer access. And you don't need me to tell you anymore about the proximity of where Goodyear is located, but we already have tenants lined up. Phoenix investors have purchased the plant. They have been wonderful to deal with, so we want to just put that out there. Positive things are happening, and jobs are coming. So this is great news. They're also handling the environmental cleanup, so there'll be a lot more to come on this. Of course, there's the naysayers, and that's just outside noise. I'll end with this real quick. I want to say this, I had the honor, and I still have chill bumps from going to the funeral of Pastor Smith's father. It takes a lot to get me to move, just to be honest with you. I moved like I've never moved before, Pastor Smith. But and there's another side to him that y'all don't see at council meeting. That man can preach, so, and he can, he can, he can speak, and he speaks from the truth. But one thing I took away, and just one that I want to share, because I think, I wish we'd videoed it and we could show it to the world, but he said his father taught him, we need to be the first to ask for forgiveness as a man, the first to lead, the first to say we're sorry, and the first to build unity. So I hope I didn't butcher that, Councilman Smith, but but that that speaks volumes to me, and I want to thank you for the witness of your father. I wish I'd have known him, but I do know you, and you're a chip off the block. So thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Ford, and thank you, council members. I too was at that celebration of life for Councilman Smith's dad, and it was, it was a true celebration. I'll just tell you that. It was, it was very heartwarming to hear all the comments and the love that was in that room, and I agree with Mayor Ford. It was, it was, it was very moving, and I came away, I think, a better person for having having been there. And I too wish I would have known your dad, but I think knowing you is probably knowing him, so.
Thank you, Mr. President.
So we're, you continue to be in our prayers. Last week, Eddie Nichols came and spoke about the Dream Center. He sent me a text this morning and wants to just announce or to remind everybody that they're, they're having their Christmas party at the Dream Center this coming Sunday from three to five. If anybody could just drop by just for a few minutes, just to see kind of what they're doing, the Dream Center, Eddie Nichols and his staff would be welcoming to have all of you. They do, they do an excellent work, and they're really reaching kids for all the, all the right reasons. That's at the old Boys and Girls Club across from Floyd Elementary School off of West Meagan Boulevard, for those of you that would like to like to go. In the coming of weeks, we're going to have through the mayor's office, we have, you know, the city has a Comcast Channel ninety-nine, and if you've ever been to Comcast Channel ninety-nine, there's, it's kind of a rolling billboard, so to speak. The mayor's office has a new vision for that, and it's become more of a TV station to promote the city. So they've graciously made allowance for the council members. We're going to be able to do monthly reports, and so that's going to be forthcoming. There's, again, we're making this plane as we fly it, but it's going to be a lot of fun. We'll be able to give maybe announcements for our districts. We'll be able to maybe recap what happened the prior month, and maybe forecast of what's to to come, and make our own announcements for community meetings and things like that. So stay tuned to that, channel Comcast Channel ninety-nine. And if there's no, looking at my notes here, if there's no further comments for anybody. Steve, I will mention, oh goodness, Martha Elrod's son, Steve, from coming down here from Huntsville, just want to remember that family along with the Smith family in our in our prayers. We need more Martha Elrods, y'all. She was ninety years old, and she had a full schedule of things she was doing the very day that she went to heaven. An amazing lady, hard worker, and always doing for others, so keep that in mind. And with inclement weather, I was thinking, Josh, when you spoke, look out for your neighbors. If you have elderly neighbors or maybe somebody that's had surgery, or they just can't get around too good, and you know there could be water in there in your neighborhood, please, please watch out for your neighbors and keep a lookout for those that maybe can't quite do for themselves. And Josh, if you have something to add, please do.
Well, I had mentioned during my presentation that they were going to be putting out a flood watch. Talk about timeliness. The flood watch goes into effect tonight at midnight and will last through tomorrow night at midnight, and that came out about two minutes ago.
Okay, well, thank you for that fresh information. So y'all, we have some inclement weather coming, a lot of water coming, so be careful and watch out for others. That being said, this meeting will be adjourned.